Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 24th, 2014 City Commission Meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to invite up Mr. George Monroe of Evanston Avenue Baptist Church to lead us in prayer, and we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Monroe?
Shall we pray? Hallelujah. Father, we thank you for this freedom that we have to be able to meet here like this. Lord, I also would pray for our mayor, our manager, our commissioners, and our clerk, Lord, that you would be with them and protect them at all times. Now be with this meeting, and we'll give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. My pleasure. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the June 9th Commission Work Session Meeting and the June 10th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation: approval of the minutes. Extension of the moratorium for establishment of medical marijuana facilities, City Clerk, summary request. On March 11th, the City Commission declared an emergency moratorium on the establishment of any medical marijuana facilities for 120 days, so staff and council may create an appropriate ordinance regulating medical marijuana facilities for consideration by the City Commission. Staff is requesting a 60-day extension of the moratorium, so a proposed ordinance may be presented to the City Commission at a meeting in August. Staff recommendation: to adopt the resolution extending the moratorium. Wheel loader public works, summary request. Authorize staff to purchase one wheel loader from Michigan CAT off of the Michigan deal state purchasing contract. Staff recommendation: authorize the purchase. Mini excavator public works, summary request. Authorize staff to purchase one mini excavator from Michigan CAT, the lowest qualified bidder. Staff recommendation: authorize staff to purchase one four-and-a-half-ton mini excavator from Michigan CAT. Selection of vinyl siding supplier for fiscal year 2014-2015, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request. To approve the Community Neighborhood Services Department's selection of the vinyl siding supplier for 2014-2015 fiscal year. After reviewing all the bids, the department selected the bid from Keane Lumber Company located at 346 West Lakewood Avenue in Muskegon for the price of $46.95 per building square for both white and colored siding. The Community Neighborhood Services Department received two additional bids from Sethco Lumber of Muskegon with a bid of white for $47 and color $49, and Home Acres in Muskegon, white for $50 and color for $51. Staff recommendation: to approve the request. Rule of One question on general ballot, City Manager, summary request. To approve the resolution to place a civil service procedure for filling positions of employment by way of promotion to eliminate the Rule of One for adoption by the voters of the city of Muskegon. Staff recommendation: to approve the resolution to place the elimination of the Rule of One question on the general ballot.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor?
Item F, Fox.
And item D.
Entertained a motion?
I motion to accept the minutes as read, except for items E, Edward, and item D, David.
I think it was item...
D.
Oh, D, David, F, Frank.
Right.
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to accept the consent agenda as presented minus item D and item F. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, Commissioner German?
Yeah, I make a motion to authorize staff to purchase a one-four-and-a-half-ton mini excavator from Michigan CAT.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to authorize staff to purchase one four-and-a-half-ton mini excavator from Michigan CAT. Commissioner?
Yeah, a question about this. I'd like to, I didn't see a price or anything on this, and wanted to know what is it needed for, and actually, do we have any photos or anything, so we can have a visual of exactly what we're purchasing?
The, I can answer the first part. Unfortunately, I did not bring any pictures with me. It's one of those small loaders that you see with landscapers, if you will, the most. You see, it's to allow us to get into backyards and small alleys. It's one of those, you see, a lot of landscapers use it more than anybody else. As far as the price is concerned, this machine is $46,100.
Forty-six thousand?
One hundred.
And?
We solicited three bids.
Okay.
And I, unfortunately, didn't make it to your list, but we got Michigan CAT, RPM Machinery, AIS Equipment. RPM Machinery submitted a proposal on a bid of 47,584, and AIS Equipment submitted a bid of 49,500. So, the CAT was the lowest responsible bid. None of them is local.
Okay. Do we already have one of these?
No.
Oh, okay, so there's a need for this.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's budgeted item, too.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just for our reference, what was the line item in the budget for this? I mean, did this come in at budget, a little below, a little above?
I believe it's within budget. This purchase was budgeted in the equipment fund, and it's within the numbers that were budgeted for, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Matt, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we adopt the resolution to place the elimination of the Rule of One question on the general ballot.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna, to adopt the resolution to place the elimination of the Rule of One question on the general ballot. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just think it was important to have some discussion, so that there's no misunderstanding. We've all listened to the voters loud and clear. This is a proposal not generated by this body, but by the Civil Service Commission. They have issued a recommendation to us, asking us to place this on the ballot on their behalf, and, you know, I'm willing to support that. I have no problem with it. But this is working within the existing civil service system. It has been reviewed by the Civil Service Commission members, and they are recommending that we adopt this proposal and send it to the general public, and hopefully, they will endorse the Civil Service Commission's recommendation on this issue. So, I just want to make everybody clear, this is coming from the Civil Service Commission itself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item and or new business, please?
Heritage Square Development LLC Construction Loan Agreement and Other Document Approval: Planning Economic Development, summary request. At the March 25th, 2014 meeting, the Commission authorized staff and the city attorney to proceed with the necessary documents to complete the loan transaction with Mr. Post for the construction of two townhouses at Heritage Square, One Clay Avenue, as well as explore the option of using home funds for an additional unit, which remains a possibility. An agreement has been reached to loan Mr. Post $500,000 from the city's Economic Development Fund for the construction of two townhouses just to the west of the existing four units. The construction loan agreement, as well as the construction loan note, commercial construction mortgage, commercial guarantee, which is Mr. Post's personal guarantee, security agreement, assignments of rent and leases, and assignment of plans and specifications have been prepared and are ready for Commission approval. Staff recommendation: to approve the construction agreement, as well as the commercial construction mortgage, commercial guarantee, which is Mr. Post's personal guarantee, security agreement, assignments of rent and leases, and assignment of plans and specifications, and authorize the mayor and clerk's signature on the documents, as well as authorize staff to sign any and all other documents necessary for the loan closing, for example, closing statement escrow agreement, transaction documents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the construction loan agreement, the other agreements and documents, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign such documents and any other documents that are necessary at the loan closing. Because I'm not going to read all that.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor. Can I clarify, as to the other documents at the closing, you're authorizing staff to sign those, as opposed to mayor and clerk? That's what the written request was?
Well, I just forgot to read that part. As well as authorize staff to sign any other documents necessary for the loan closing.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
And you're good with that, with the second?
Yep.
Okay, very good. It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna, to approve the construction loan agreement with Heritage Square Development LLC, as well as the commercial construction mortgage, commercial guarantee, which is Mr. Post's personal guarantee, security agreement, assignment of rents and leases, and assignment of plans and specifications, and authorize the mayor and clerk's signatures on the documents, as well as authorize staff to sign any and all documents necessary for the loan closing, such as closing statement, escrow agreement, transaction documents, et cetera. Discussion? Vice Mayor? Do you have anything?
Just hear the staff report.
As long as you hear staff report.
Okay, thank you. And there's not a whole lot more to say than what is here, but we are happy to come back to you. As you recall, you did approve moving forward on this. I credit the attorneys for putting all the legal documentation together, which we have before us. Mr. Post is here in the audience, if you have any specific questions from him. But I think it's a pretty tight timeline. Our purpose with using this money for this purpose is to get these moving as quickly as possible, so you'll see those dates in here. Thirty days, I think, to start pulling permits, and 90 days to start construction, and in order to stay within the limits of no interest on the loan itself, they have to, the units have to be substantially done by the end of this year. So, I think we're all feeling pretty good about the way this was structured, and Mr. Post being able to move forward. Also, you'll be happy to note that we did include the completion of the sidewalk along that whole clay street and in front of this area, so that's something that will be a plus for the whole downtown area as well.
Okay, thank you. Planning Director, Ruth Baker-Clark. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yeah, I had asked Mr. Post about substantially done by February, I think.
Correct.
What is substantially done? Not rid of occupancy, right?
Yeah, I don't know, Mr. Attorney, if you have something specific to say there, but I think we would have the ability to say if it's close enough to being completed.
Commissioner Turnquist, if you look at the construction loan agreement, Section 1.2B3 defines substantially completed as the building envelope is complete, all roughing inspections have been completed, insulation's been installed, drywall hung, and work is progressing on the interior finishes.
Speaking of the structure of the document, very well done, I think, overall, well-done type, like the timeline. I saw some improvements from what we had discussed previously in terms of having the interest rate in the event that there's noncompliance, the additional security interest versus just those two lots. Now we see all assets of the buyer, so I like that. So, I definitely saw some improvements in the structure of this agreement. Makes me feel a heck of a lot more comfortable. I liked it before, but I feel a lot more comfortable about it, and the fact that we're getting full payment regardless of the sale price. So, well done. I look forward to the new townhouses, and eventually, the entire Heritage Square filled out. Yeah?
And you want to buy one?
I'm happy in this. I'm happy in this.
Commissioner, I'll say thank you, but frankly, it was Mr. Peterson and Ms. Ruth Baker-Clark that were intimately involved in tightening up this entire transaction.
Thank you, staff. And thank you, council. Vice Mayor?
Certainly doesn't have to, but since Mr. Post is here, if he would care to share with us the particulars of what this project entails, that would be an appropriate time.
Would you like to come up, Gary? He kind of left a caveat in there that he didn't have to.
I'm willing to come up, Mr. Mayor, not necessarily liking it, but I'm willing. I think Kathy was right, and Attorney Schreier, in what they outlined. It's a tight timeframe, I admit to that, but I think it's certainly doable. We have one set of prints into SafeBuild's office currently for permits, and we expect to submit the second one here within the next few days for permitting as well. So, I certainly think we can comply with the 30-day requirement, have the permits in. We need to start construction within 90 days. We certainly expect to start long before that, with substantial completion by the end of the year and occupancy by the end of February. Again, tight timeframes, but certainly, I think, doable. We had the winter of the century last year, so we're not anticipating that again this year, that will slow anything down. I think, well, I just want to offer sincere thanks, anticipating that this will be approved to the City Commission. I don't think we can overestimate, again, the importance of this in terms of economic development. I continue to believe that residential is really critical, having people living downtown and walking the streets, you know, 24/7, is really important for lots of reasons, for the health of our community. And certainly, there are other developments in the works as well, but I also see Heritage Square as a key part of the residential component downtown here as well. And for our city manager and Kathy to recognize that and to come to us with an offer to help with the financing, I don't think can be overestimated, and I want to offer my sincere thanks to you for recognizing that and for making this gesture.
Very good. Thank you, Gary, and good luck with all.
Thank you.
Anything else from the Commission? Matt, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Farmers Market Rentals: Planning Economic Development, summary request. City staff would like to allow public rental of certain areas of the new farmers market facility. The proposed rental rates are shown on the 2014 Farmers Market Rental Rate Sheet. There would be five separate areas of the farmers market available for rent, as shown on the farmers market site map. Staff is requesting approval of the rental rates as listed. Staff recommendation: staff recommends approval of the rental rates and incorporation of the rates into the city's fee schedule. Staff also recommends that the Commission authorize staff to negotiate in-kind services in lieu of a portion or all of the rental fee when appropriate.
Thank you. Move to approve? Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the rental rates for the farmers market and incorporation of the rates into the city's fee schedule. Staff also has recommended that the Commission authorize staff to negotiate in-kind services in lieu of a portion or all the rental fee when appropriate. And you're back with us, Madam Director.
Can't get rid of me yet. Thank you. We've been working long and hard on this, between Mohammed and Bernadette and Lori and our office and the city manager. Think, we believe this is the best way to outline potential fees for the farmers market. We've already gotten several requests in from organizations that would like to use the market, whether specifically for their own event or for additional events. Some we see as more community events. You may have heard there's one for some dances to be held there in the evenings, a few evenings this summer. Others are for their own event that they've had in the past, but they just like it located here. Our feeling is, for this first year, we just like it to be used. We like, we want people to be down there, get familiar with the market, see all the activity going on, so that if we can negotiate some things, for instance, volunteer time, hour-by-hour type basis, where they, because we do have a great volunteer need right now at the farmers market. We've got the kids program, the Power of Produce, which you may have read on M-Live recently. They are now up to 500 and some kids. They had 300 and some sign up this past Saturday. It's just amazing. They actually have to cut it off until they get additional funding, but we need volunteers for that, so there's all kinds of things we can use volunteers for, and if we're able to work with some organizations. This year on that, additional free advertising, when they do their own advertising, they can advertise for the market as well. Some of those things, not for everybody, but that we may be able to work out with some folks. We are in the process of doing a business plan, however. Mercy Health Partners have agreed to give us the services to kind of head that up, and we're working with them on that, with an intern that we have. So, we may, as we look towards the future and additional staffing for the market and those types of things, we may not want to do that type of thing in the future, because we may need as many funds as we can get to support future market activity. But for the first year, we'd like a little leeway to be able to work with folks.
Questions from the Commission? Mr. Johnson?
What factors went into deciding the rates? So, we have the rental rate of $200 per session for Facility A, Facility B, and Facility C, each with different amenities and different sizes, and it's like Facility A is the most robust of the option package, and B is, you know, the middle of the road, and C is the smallest, yet they have the same price. What was the determining factors in deciding the same price for all three options?
It was basically, actually, originally, we were looking at the entire market, so that was our first proposal, that we were going to lease out the full market, but then we realized a lot of people didn't need the full market, so that's how we came up with dividing it up. And it just has to do with, if they're going to use restrooms, a lot of that has to do with the staffing and the costs that we have. I believe we looked at two hours before an event and two hours after an event, that we'd need staff to be in there, making sure the restrooms are ready, the site's ready, that type of thing. If somebody's not, we wanted to leave a little leeway if somebody's just coming in for a shower or something like that, that may not require the restrooms, it's just for a short period of time. There's some other costs to do with that. So, it's really how much, how much cost the city has into it. If they're using the indoor market area, even if they don't use the stalls, you'll see that they can rent that, and it includes the stalls that are adjacent to it. Even if they aren't using the stalls, they would still pay that amount, because it's really the interior that's costing the most money, because you've got the utilities for the indoor portion there. So, we took all those things into account. This is our first year, we're just trying it out. I expect this will look different next year, but we wanted to get something on the books to, for our staff to go with for this first year, that we can start charging and know what services we're providing.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, please.
Police Review Board Minority Coalition, City Clerk, summary request. A letter of understanding between the Muskegon Minority Coalition and the city of Muskegon was adopted on November 10th of 1998. Some items in the original letter are now obsolete. Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna, Commissioner Hood, staff, and members of the minority-based organizations met to discuss needed changes. The two most significant changes the organization agreed to are as follows. Place the remark inactive, no longer exist, next to Muskegon Urban League and Ad-Hoc Committee for Equality and Justice, who no longer exist. Remove term limits. Organizations have been asked to obtain approval from the respective boards and obtain signatures from authorized individuals. Staff recommendation: to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the First Amendment to the Letter of Understanding between the Muskegon Minority Coalition and the city of Muskegon dated November 10th, 1998.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Is there someone here that can give me the...
We'll need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign... Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Rinzema-Savigna, to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the First Amendment to the Letter of Understanding between the Muskegon Minority Coalition and the city of Muskegon dated November 10th, 1998. Commissioner Turnquist?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if there's someone here that can give me the mission statement for the Police Review Board Minority Coalition? It looks like the last time that this became, came before the Commission was in 1998. Do I read that correctly?
Yeah. I don't have the mission statement in front of me. I know it's on the index of committees. I'm sure we could look it up, but it has, the Police Review Board was set up in 1998 in reaction to an incident that I think, or a couple of incidents that occurred in the city of Muskegon. I wasn't here at the time, so I don't know all the particulars, or some other people who know, but it, the Police Review Board was agreed to be set up at that time as a mechanism to ensure better relations between the city and residents, so I think it's been functioning since then. That's the main purpose of it. I don't know if anyone cares to elaborate, but...
So, it's a relationship between the city and the residents of the city?
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, most pertinently in regards to law enforcement, so that there's some appeals process and some mechanisms for there to be back and forth, so people can appeal what happens.
In case there's a citizen complaint as well.
Yeah.
And so, they, there is that mechanism to go before the board to review a particular incident, if there's a citizen complaint or concern, and the committee makes a ruling of sorts in tandem with working with the complainant.
So, it has nothing to do with hiring practices?
No, no.
Okay. The reason I ask, I respect every one of these organizations that are listed here, and, but I do have some things that I don't agree with on the Nation of Islam. And I looked it up, and back to all the organizations, I looked up on what their purpose and what they were doing, and it, I guess if it doesn't do with hiring, because one of the things that they do, they believe in the Holy Koran, which means they believe in total domination, and they follow the book, the Holy Book of Koran in that matter, and they also abide by Sharia law, which is very, very difficult on women. And, but if it does not have anything to do with what I'm concerned about, I guess you've answered my questions.
Yeah, it's purely, it's purely used for citizen input, should there be a concern, a complaint because of a particular incident, and this is their vehicle to interact with the, the police department, okay? Handling complaints? Yes. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just, you know, since I was pretty active, I wasn't on the Commission yet when this was created, but I'm well aware, I'm sure the mayor is as well, and a few others, as to what led to its creation, there, there were some high-profile incidents where the actions of our police department were called into question. Lawsuits ended with mixed results, but costing the city considerable amount of money. And members of the community through their various organizations, some of which, not all of which, but some of which became signatory to this agreement, and the city of Muskegon and neighborhood associations came together and said, "There's got to be a better way to resolve these issues and improve the relationship between the police department and the community they're here to serve and protect." And this is the mechanism that was developed for that. One of the things that this does, as you'll notice, is it does have a law enforcement professional on here, that has to be from a non-Muskegon police department office, so that there is somebody there who's M.C.O.L. certified, who can answer those kind of technical questions.[1782.13]
somebody there who's M-COAL certified, who can answer those kind of technical questions. As a neutral observer, it's important, I think, that our community feel comfortable with our police department, that they feel that the police department's working for all of us, and that if there is a question or complaint, that even though I have the utmost faith with Chief Lewis and his predecessors, having an outside body that's made up of neighbors and representatives of these organizations gives you an outside set of eyes, an opportunity to show that that complaint was handled honestly and fairly, and that you're getting your justice from what occurred. Now, not everybody's satisfied with those outcomes, but I think it has served its purpose well. And I'm certainly, it's needed to be updated for a while, and I really appreciate the work that Chairman Rinsama Sibiga and Commissioner Hood put into this, and reaching out to the existing organizations and reaching this, this new agreement. So I'm happy to support it. I think it's served us well, and I hope my fellow commissioners support it as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions or input? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, please.
Concurrent with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish the Following: 254 Monroe, 1245 Fleming Garage Only, and 30 East Clay. Summary request. This is to request that the City Commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder. Staff recommendation to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here?
Is there anyone here to speak on 254 Monroe? Is there anyone here to speak on 1245 Fleming Garage Only? And Mr. Holst?
I'm here.
You, and you will be speaking on 30 East Clay, correct, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. So we do have someone here on 30 East Clay.
I would move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish 254 Monroe and 1245 Fleming Garage Only.
Second?
It's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals to demolish 254 Monroe and 1245 Fleming Garage Only. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So we may begin discussion. I would move that we concur with the Housing Board Notice of Appeals' decision to demolish 30 East Clay.
Second?
It's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinsama Sibiga, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' notice in order to demolish 30 East Clay. Mr. Holst?
We could have you come forward if you want to make your statement, sir. We'll just ask for your name and address, and then you can make your statement, and then we'll take a staff report.
My name is David Holst, and I live in Byron Center, Michigan, and I own the building on 30 East Clay and have for probably 20 or 25 years. We've always tried to maintain the building and keep the appearance looking good. We have run different businesses out of there, and because of the highway changing, we lost some of our properties, and so then we lost some of the people that we had renting the building. But we tried to maintain it anyway. And when I was in Florida this last year, we got a letter saying that they were kind of concerned about the looks of the building, and I called down here into Michigan, and every time I called, they said it kept snowing. So I kept staying in Florida. So I really miss being here, but I've been a cadet counselor for 25 years, and we used that building to house some of the stuff for the Calvinas Cadet Corps. We also use a building for housing stuff for master arts theater, and we do this at no charge. We've always paid our taxes, and we always tried to keep the property looking good. Personally, the last three years have been tough on me because I had a back operation, and I had a hip operation, and blah, blah, blah. But I'm still here, and I'm back. So we want to try to make the building look good, and we've got a list of things from the city commission, not from the commission, but from the housing, and they would like us to do several things. And I had talked to Mr. Kirk somebody, and...
Mr. Briggs?
And I told him that I would for sure meet with him and do whatever he thought was necessary to make the building more attractive. So I guess that's where I'm at, so.
All right. Okay. Mr. Briggs, is there anything that you would like to add, or...
Well, I think she blew us...
Or chief?
I can give you a summary, and then if you have specific questions, you can address them at home or... Is that satisfactory?
Can I ask you some questions?
For the owner?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you take a question from the commissioner?
I'd be happy to.
So you said you're willing to work with the city on bringing it up to code?
Yes.
So you're prepared to, what we have, estimated cost of repairs is $280,000.
Say again?
That what we have for an estimate for cost to repair is $280,000. Do you have that kind of fund or lining up that kind of money in order to make the necessary repairs?
I guess what I don't understand is where your cost is coming from at this point. Okay.
Okay.
And do I have that much money? It's not what you call chump change, but, I mean, I'm, I can do what I have to do, but I don't want to spend $250,000 on that building, obviously, if it needs a little repair. That's one thing, but...
But you're willing to commit considerable monies to bring...
I'm willing to commit, I would say probably $50,000 to $60,000. We spent $70,000 on a roof about three years ago, and now I found out that, just today, that there's another part of the roof that's weak, but...
You have no going businesses in that building currently?
No. We only use that building mainly for warehousing. We have two businesses in Grand Rapids, and in our off-seasonal stuff, like our, for instance, we have like six or 7,000 chairs, and we use that for warehousing, the chairs and tables.
When was the last time you had a going business operating out of there, out of the building?
Prior to their, doing the road. So it's probably four years, five years? When did they do that lake shore?
Yeah.
I had, I had two businesses in there.
Yeah, it's been about 10 years since we've done Shore Drive to drive east.
Funny how time goes fast. But anyway, we had BioBud Plasma in there, and we had the Downtown Antique Home there one time. And then I ran my business out of there, too. We had a rental business going on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I want to hear from the chief.
Chief?
Any other questions?
At this point?
Evening, commissioners and mayor. We don't dispute what he's saying today. The property did fall into disrepair back early this year in January. Property notifications did go out to the owner of the building, and as he stated, they went out, they were signed for a return, that there was an acknowledgement, he was aware this was going on. Safe Bill did go out and perform inspections, and gave him an inspection sheet of what was necessary to bring the building up to code. And the estimated cost of repairs from Safe Bill was $280,000. The SEV on the property is $81,500, which shows there's an imbalance there as far as the property goes. The Housing Board of Appeals met on May 1st, and that's after the snow had left, thank God. But there was no representation from the owner of the building there to actually speak to that commission, so they had no other option at that time but to follow our recommendations, which was to demo the building. I heard him state that he is interested in doing something with the building. At this time, the only recommendation I would have is to move forward towards a superintendent control of some sort, where he would actually put a bond together so that it would cover the cost of the demo of the building. So if he did not proceed with the minimum code repairs, that we would have that in escrow to go ahead with the demo. That would, I think, be an equitable way to solve this and move it forward, because, like I said, we had the Housing Board of Appeals, and they had an opportunity to come and speak with that board, and no one did come, although they had signed for that.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Just to refresh everybody, if we could have the city attorney outline, if we vote to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals, could you explain how that appeals process worked for the property owner?
Sure. Assuming you vote to approve, it would give the property owner 20 days to file suit against the city asking for a writ of superintendent control to prevent the city from moving forward on the demolition. Our general process is we try and enter into an agreement whereby money is deposited with the city treasurer to cover the cost of demo, which would be returned if permits are pulled on time and the work completed on time. If not, we retain the money to pay for the demolition.
Thank you. So that would be the, an outline of the process, Mr. Holst. So if the vote does go for demo, you could then make contact with, with yourself?
Yeah, I could assist, but as the city attorney had talked about, he has so much time to file that, I believe with the circuit court, correct?
Yes.
And then I would work with Mr. Schreier to set up some kind of an agreement, so that would go forth. And I just want to add one thing, as we've spent, you know, six months dealing, working on this, following due process and notifications and having hearings, because, you know, what we want to do is we want to get this taken care of. So when it gets to the commission, they understand that the work and time has been put into this, and decision has been made, and that if someone actually is interested in a property and rehabbing it, getting it to minimum standards, they would follow this and put down, you know, some kind of deposit to assure that the building would be brought up to minimum code at that time.
So if the vote does go for demolition, please sit tight, make contact with the chief, and we'll be able to put you in the right direction as to this process, and hopefully we'll have a...
You know, when I got calls, when I was in Florida, I tried to call and wish back whoever was trying to call me, and nobody ever returned my call. So I understand that you wish your papers to stick them on the door, but when I'm in Florida, that don't mean squatting, because I'm not even here.
Right, we do post...
They sent papers, and they were signed by somebody, not me, but my girl sent me the paper down the floor, and that's what I called. But I still couldn't get contact with anyone. So I'm sorry that I didn't do it properly, but I don't want to lose that building.
All right. Well, if the vote does go, please see staff, and there is the process, I think that would be amenable, and give you the opportunity to make those improvements, all right?
I'll do what they recommend to the superintendent, whoever you call.
Very good.
I have a question. How bad a condition is that building in? Could you give us some feedback on what actually needed to be done?
It was in your path.
Kurt, why don't you come up here, because you did the inspection, and Kurt did the inspection, plus it's in the file. He can explain to the extent of what shape the building is in.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. We did do an inspection there. Some gentleman met us there, took us through the whole building. We've listed most of the major deficiencies. There's 23 of them on this list. A lot of the minor stuff we didn't worry about, but the major stuff is on this list. There's a wall on Clay Street that is bowing out and could let go, causing the whole roof to collapse on one whole portion of the building. They did put a new roof on one part of the building, but there's apparently some problems with some drains there that maybe won't hold the load of a downpour like they might have. There's another part of the building that's missing roofing. The masonry all around the building's in bad condition. The foundation in the west side is in bad condition. So there's quite a few deficiencies there. And by the time you look at the, rehab the building and put new furnaces in it, upgrade the plumbing where it's supposed to be, upgrade the electrical where it's supposed to be, plus there's work done in that building in different areas without any permits, so that all needs to be rectified. The fire suppression system needs to be brought up to where it's supposed to be. That's required by code. It had fire suppression at one time, and it's fallen, disappeared. So there's a lot of issues with that building.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, you know, in my work, I have to periodically go over to the United Way office, which is at the old insurance offices over there on Clay Street. And over the last year or so, the condition of this building has obviously progressively deteriorated. There's more and more spalled brick on the sidewalk. You don't have to be a building contractor to see that those masonry walls are bowing out. Quite frankly, I'm worried about the public safety with this building. Fortunately, there's not a lot of foot traffic there, but it's a public street. And, you know, this building is long overdue for intensive maintenance, and I think we should concur, and if the gentleman is sincere, and I hope that he is, then he'll reach an agreement to bring the building up to code, and he'll keep his building, and the citizenry will be safe. And if he chooses not to, then I think a dangerous building, and quite frankly, what has unfortunately become in the last few years of blight in the community from a safety and from an aesthetic standpoint, would be removed. So I would urge that we concur with the work that the Housing Board of Appeals has done, and let that process play out. The owner has every opportunity to bring this back up to code and save his building if he chooses. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else?
Just one other question for the gentleman. What are your plans for you to do with this building?
It is strictly for warehousing.
Just strictly warehousing?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, they talk about the heating and the plumbing and the roofing. The building's been there since 1932. The roofing and the terrain has been there since 1932, and it's been adequate since then. I don't know why we want to change it now, certainly. I don't know what you're talking about, bringing up if you wanted the fire suppression, we put fire stations all through the building, which is not...
They'll be able to explain the state uniform code and our requirements of what we're to enforce.
That fire suppression hasn't been in there since before I bought the building, so...
They'll have to look at that.
...
Okay, okay. Anything else?
Just one other question. You know, as a commissioner, and I've sat on the Housing Board of Appeals before I was removed from that committee, and I see a lot of citizens that come in here that don't have the funds to sometimes put into their buildings. And as a, I would say, business-friendly commissioner, you know, I want to do our best to try to work with, you know, the community and the citizens. But we do have to, you know, go by ordinance and a safety code to enforce, you know, safe buildings and stuff. So if this is passed, you know, I just want to wish you the best, and, you know, try to get, you know, that building up to code, and, you know, we'd be willing to work with you.
I think the work that you're talking about is a real important thing, and I agree.
Okay.
But they said like broken windows. You know, maybe we should have more police, the police and the little kids with homes. I don't know how much I can do about that except replace the windows, which I do. But they had four things they wanted me to do, paint it only one, so aesthetically it would look better, fix the brick, and replace the windows, and that, all four, I don't understand, $250,000. Whatever, I'll do what, you know, what is acceptable.
Reasonable, okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item E, please.
Resolution to place question to increase tax levy on ballot, City Manager. Summary request to approve the resolution for proposed charter amendment to allow the City Commission to levy up to 14 mils for municipal purposes. If adopted, this question will be placed on the general ballot for consideration by the voters. Staff recommendation to adopt the resolution to place a question on the ballot to levy up to 14 mils for municipal purposes.
Vice Mayor?
I would move that we adopt the resolution to place a question on the ballot to levy up to 14 mils for municipal purposes.
Second?
It's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinsama Sibiga, to adopt the resolution to place a question on the ballot to levy up to 14 mils for municipal purposes. I believe we do have some members of the public that would like to speak to this issue before we go into our own deliberation, and I'll invite them up at this time. Mr. Joshua Alden Brady?
Good evening. My name's Joshua Alden Brady. I live at 1336 Spring Street. I find it slightly ironic that the same day that the listings come out for the tax foreclosure sale, the commission finds itself voting about a tax increase... sale, the commission finds itself voting about a tax increase. And I want to address more the specifics of what you have here. I have a very difficult time knowing where much of our city is economically supporting a tax increase, but I certainly would do my best not to oppose one to do the road repairs that we need to do. And I expect that this commission will ask the very hard questions that need to be asked in making the decisions to prioritize how the money is spent. I also understand that every member of this commission's committed to spending this extra four mils on road repair, but I'm concerned because nothing in this charter amendment binds any future commission to doing the same. And the simple fact is, next year, four of you are up for reelection. Every two years, commissioners change. And I know you will have my opposition, and I expect you'll have strong opposition from a lot of other people if you put this on the ballot without some kind of meaningful commitment to buy not only yourselves, but also future commissions to spending this extra four mils on road repairs where we need it, where you're asking us to approve at four, and where we need to make sure it stays. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Ms. Deroon, did you want to speak at this time on the...
No, I would draw my last.
Okay, very good, thank you. Susan Clotier?
Good evening.
Good evening, Susan Clotier, with Representing Disability Connection, West Michigan. We all know that state departments in general across our country are spending more money building new roads than maintaining the ones that we have. And there's many recommendations out there that we are, as a community, going to need to support our own communities. And I'm just here to say, I support your decision to move forward on asking for increase in millage, but that when you do that, and if that passes, and when you move forward, will remind you that you have made a commitment for complete streets. That includes excess of road curb cuts and wider spaces for people to be able to run their wheelchairs down streets and make sure that there's access for all. And it's not just about roads and repair, but it's about multimodal support for our community. So with that, I support that and wish I could vote for it, but I live in the town.
Well, thank you very much, thank you. Mr. Robert Jennings, welcome home.
Thank you so much, good to be back. It's always a pleasure to address the commission, exercising my privileges as a citizen of Muskegon. My name is Robert Jennings, and I live at 3553 Marina View Point. First, I want to go on record as supporting this millage, repairing our infrastructure. I think it's very important that the citizens step up and assume some responsibility for improving our city, improving the environment, making it more attractive and safer. I do have a couple of questions. I will make an appointment with our city manager for specifics in terms of some of the costs and some of the plans as they are at this point to address our infrastructure. But at this point, I want to clarify something. Now, of the 14 mils, 10 mils would already be authorized, is that correct?
Yes.
It is. So we're looking then at additional four mils that would total the 14. What is the longevity for this levy?
That would be...
Appropriativity. The commission sets a levy every year, so they would be able to set it out anywhere between essentially zero and 14 each budget cycle, so each year. It's a change in the charter.
Okay.
So more of the people to change the charter to something else would have to happen before that, before it changes from 14 again.
Okay. And the projected revenue from the four mils would be approximately $2 million? And that's for, it's an annual projection?
Yes.
Has anyone looked into the total cost, what it would do to resurface and bring our streets up to a decent condition? Do we know at that point?
We had that's made from our Public Works Department, that's $72 million to bring up, bring, I think, to 80% of the streets in fairer, better condition. So we know that this won't get us there overnight.
Okay, I'm a little bit taken back with that, because I've lived in three condominiums where we have resurfaced, and I've vowed to do another one. And I just can't see that that amount of money is going to be adequate. Okay, and again, that's a layman here, but just my experience, I know what it costs to pave our street, the people of Harbertown just did that, the circle that we financed with the help of the city financed ourselves, I know what the costs were there. And I hope we can do it for $2 million a year, and we'll make a big difference. So thank you for clarifying that for me. Just another point here about timing. Firstly, this is a good time, I think, to do that, to assume some responsibility for going to the community and having the community be responsible in improving our city. For those of you that don't know, our city debt burden per cap has been declining since 2010, and it's low in comparison to other cities of late cities. Our tax rate, millage runs from around 45 mils, a little over, to 53, depending on where you live in the city, which I feel is very, very reasonable. I would just leave with this thought, I know you have to make some really hard decisions, and I'm sure there are lessons in city commission school about that. You don't make decisions on the basis of how easy they are, because they're cheap, or because they're popular. You make them because they're essential and because they're the right thing to do. Now, earlier, a speaker mentioned that once the decision is made on what to do, I'm looking forward to taking part in whatever that plan is to help implement the decision so that it will pass. I'll be making appointment with our city manager next week to sit down with him and open some avenues for my assistance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Commissioners? Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm assuming most people want to say something, but I just want to say, I was engaged as part of the committee that campaigned to get the income tax implemented a little over 20 years ago. And the first thing that we did as part of that campaign is we came to the city commission as it was constituted at that time, and we asked that city commission to adopt a resolution specifying how the revenue from the income tax would be spent. And what that resolution says, and there's, I'll just get the main points, but for the next five years, the city commission would commit to hiring 10 additional police officers, two additional firefighters, start up an equipment fund for the fire department to pay for fire equipment, and so on. And there's a few other items on that list. And I will say that when this body makes a commitment like that, it keeps it even when it was made by our predecessors. Because here we are, almost 20 years later, and those promises have been kept. Our police department was at 61 officers when that income tax was passed, and we're up, not where we'd like to be, but we're up in the upper 70s right now, in a lot better shape. We have been able to purchase fire equipment using money set aside from that source. We have maintained our fire service, and so on. And so I think it's very important for all of us up here that if we adopt this resolution to put this on the ballot, in the very near future, in the next meeting or two, I know the manager's time is booked and double booked with all the things that we ask him to do. But I think in the very near future, we owe it to the citizens to put together a very specific budget that will show how much money would go to streets, how much money would go to streetlights and sidewalks, and so on, so people can say at the next election cycle and every two years thereafter, are you keeping your promise to us or not? Because I for one, if I vote for this, hold me accountable. Hold us accountable for doing what we're saying we're going to do. We can't wait for the state to get their act together. They went home and did nothing. And our streets look the way they do, and they look this bad all over the state. So we can wish and hope and want, or we can take care of our own business. And I think as responsible leaders, we need to take care of our own business. And as much as I don't want to have the tax rate increase more than anybody else, because I got to pay it too, I think this is the right thing for us to do. And I think adopting a resolution with a budget for this money and asking the voters to hold us accountable for it is also the right thing to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other input?
Yeah, I concur with what Commissioner Spataro said. When I saw it written up on our packet, municipal purposes kind of left me cold, because that can cover anything. And I do think we need to be specific. On our town hall meetings, we basically talked roads. And we also talked the possibility of assessment for street lighting. Now, we've combined them together. And if that's the two things that we talk to the people about, I think we need to be specific that they know where the money will be spent and how much in each area. So I would, you know, take out municipal purposes and be more specific. And the time limit, I like that, too, for the next...
Commissioner?
Well, I think that there's a couple issues. I think by the, to get the ballot measure approved, it has to be the language that was, is being suggested. I think that what we're talking about, the promise, is more the resolution, which we're not considering today. We would consider sometime between now and the election.
Before the election.
And that would be the specifics of what this commission would resolve to do with the money for some period of time. I don't think that we can include that in the ballot language, but...
Counsel?
Mr. Commissioner, so you understand, before this resolution was presented to you, this has been vetted and argued back and forth between our office and the Attorney General's office several different times as to exact language. I would ask that you not vary from what's been agreed to between our office and the Attorney General's office. They will, they are one of the bodies that needs to pass on what the language is that goes on the ballot and what goes in your charter. I absolutely agree with the concept, however, of adopting a resolution specifying where the money goes. That doesn't have to get approval from the Attorney General's office.
Commissioner Johnson?
I understand the reason for the language of the current resolution, and that we're intending on doing a subsequent resolution guiding how the funds are going to be expended based on continuing conversations within the community. And we had, we've already had some great conversations with the community through our outreach and our graft, and Ms. Schreier's, and very positive reception there, I think there was good support for this kind of investment, this understanding and realization that it's very much needed to improve the quality of life in Muskegon, and also attract new businesses and new residents, so I think it's pivotal. However, I do share the concern about future commissions maybe not following through on the resolution that we end up deciding on. If we decide three mils to go to streets, one mil to go to lighting, there's the possibility for subsequent commissions maybe not follow through on that. Question to our attorney, is there, when we do decide on a resolution for how to guide expenditures, is there a way to establish a binding resolution for a 10-year limit or 20-year limit or whatever is decided? Is there any possibility for a binding resolution?
No, this body does not have the ability to bind future city commissions any more than the city commission 20 years ago binds you. It is more of a...
Advisory?
Advisory, and the remedy is the election. If the commissioners aren't doing what the citizens want, the remedy is the citizens will find new commissioners.
And they do. And they do.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm opposed of raising taxes. There is a need for our streets improvement, and this is a mechanism to actually get that done. Now, the final vote will be up to the citizens, you know. If they have enough faith and trust in the commissioners to follow through and do what they said they're going to do, and I think that's the most important thing, we have to be accountable. And like Vice Mayor stated, you know, hold me accountable as well, you know. And that's my purpose for being here, is to serve the community. You know, I don't want to mislead you in any way. And I just want you to give it some thought and see if this would be in your best interest to have better streets, help raise your property value, and we can move forward. But most of all, we want to work together as a community, and even in the community relation meetings, you know, we've had a good turnout, but that was only a fraction of the community, and there's a lot of other citizens that didn't get the information. I still think that we really need to engage those citizens out there to get their input. Because if you do the statistics, you only have a fraction, and you can't measure a population like that. So I think there's more work to be done. I think, you know, we have to get the information out there and get their confidence in us as commissioners and as government body.
With that in mind, you know, I know that we'll take opportunity to continue our outreach, but we have to put responsibility on the citizens as well. We all have heard the term, you know, an informed electorate. Well, when that term was first brought out, the onus was on the electorate to inform themselves, to engage their elected officials. So I would challenge all my fellow citizens that as we get this posted online on the city website, as this is reported out in the local media, it's incumbent upon you to use those mechanisms. We still have print, journalism, it's also electronic, and we also have the information available on the city website. So continue to take advantage of those good tools and to educate yourselves as well as engage us, so that we can be clear on what we're proposing, what we're doing, you know, as well through the entire process. So we're here available, but the information is also available to you should you wish to take the initiative online, and also you'll continue to see it reported in the media when we do have the community meetings. Those were well-publicized, it's incumbent on the citizens, you know, to come on out for hot dogs and ice cream and good conversation and discussion. Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Sabiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll continue to move forward and make our case with our fellow citizens moving towards November. Is there any other business, commissioners?
Just one item. This is probably for the chief at the NIMs Neighborhood Association meeting last night, an issue about people parking in the loading zone on 4th Street in front of the arena came up, and I just wanted to make, pass that along, that apparently there are some people who are parking there as opposed to using that as a drop off and pickup. And for people who do have mobility issues, it is important to keep that clear, and, you know, perhaps a review of signage. I mean, the sign changes at the post office- I mean, the sign changes at the post office seem to be effective, so it might be worth taking a look. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? We'll take time now for public participation. I do have a request for Speaker, Rosalynn Turner, regarding 713 Church Avenue. Good evening, Ms. Turner. If we could just have your name and address for the record?
My name is Rosalynn Turner, and I live at 713 Church Avenue, but I'm...
Okay, that's...
The property I want to address is at 1189 Chestnut.
Chestnut, okay. Thank you for correcting me.
Okay. I received a letter from Safe Bill back in December of 2012 stating they couldn't give me a certificate of compliance because I owed a bill back to 2008. So, and I, I didn't know what that was about. So I called and spoke to Stephanie, also spoke with Ron Johnston, and they told me I had some trash at the property, and the door was broken. And I did get a letter regarding that back in March of 2008, but it was repaired. And once I repaired it, I never heard anything else from anyone. So when it, all my other inspections, they were passing. So in 2013, I spent about $10,000 to $12,000 on the property, and the city matched that to bring up some other things that I had recently got about the lid and all of that. After all of that was taken care of and all the inspections was done, then I got this letter from Sun Bill in December saying they can't give me a certificate of compliance and that I owe, because I owe $115 because I didn't remove trash and the door wasn't repaired. So I asked them if they could send me pictures of what they were talking about because the storm door had came off, was hanging, but that was because of the weather, but it was repaired. I don't know what trash they were talking about because the yard is fenced in. And they sent me these pictures, and I don't see any trash in the yard. I see a few leaves, but there's big trees in the yard, and so there's going to be some leaves. And my thing is, I'm thinking someone might have dropped the ball in, you know, marking that all these repairs were done. And then, all of a sudden, in 2013, after other things were repaired, then they said, oh, here's something back from 2008. She has to pay this $115. And I emailed the mayor about it, and I also emailed the city manager about it. And I didn't get a pleasing response, so I asked to be heard because I don't feel that I should have to pay this $115 way back from 2008 over some leaves and a door that was repaired.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
At the end of these proceedings, I'll give you a contact number for the new city manager. Okay, was it?
Yeah, it was it.
And he'll discuss this further with you.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I heard that I think it's important, since one of the things you mentioned, and forget to mention, is we do have the public access channel. I think it's important to take advantage of that. Because I've got a letter myself. I know how these letters go because my drive, my garage and my neighbor's garage are side by side on the alley. So when you're going down the alley, it's not always clear what address it is. It's always important, even if you do the repair work yourself, and my neighbor and I took care of the problem that was cited in the letter, but always follow up with a call and make sure that they've marked that the problem's been remediated. I don't know if there was a problem with paperwork or whatever, but it's always important to close that loop. Is, when you get one of those things and fix it, take that last step and call up and let them know that you fixed it so they can take you off of any repair list or anything else and hopefully avoid these kind of situations from occurring. So that's just, I thought it was important to let people know. Because I've been there myself. I've got one of these letters, like, oh, wait a minute, that's not my garage, but it was sent to my address. So sometimes those things happen.
Okay, and they did give me a deadline as to April 14th, that they would be back.
Right.
So my concern was, did they go back?
And that's what you'll have to talk with the manager about. I don't know any of that. I'm just saying that when you do clean things up on your own, you or any other property owner, after you got one of those letters, always finish by contacting the number on the letter and letting them know that the problem's been fixed so that they can mark that it's been taken care of and you don't get charged by mistake if in fact you were charged by mistake.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission at this point? If not, I entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communications and the city manager's evaluation.
It's moved into closed session.
It is moved by Commissioner Johnson and seconded by Commissioner German to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communication and city manager's evaluation. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaas Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Do we need five minutes to freshen our makeup? Okay. Don't make me come looking for you. You've got five minutes.